Court will come to order. It is Monday, August the 11th, 2025. It's nine o'clock in the morning and the Kirk County Commissioners Court is now in session. If you would, please stand for the prayer and the pledge, which will be led by Commissioner Harris.
Thank you, Judge. Lord, we commit this meeting to you. As we discuss the affairs of Kirk County, we ask for your will to be done. Enlighten us that you may know, that we may know what you want us to accomplish. We desire your glory and blessing in all we do. Direct our thoughts, words, decisions, and actions toward the right path that help us stay on track. Let your will be done, have been planned, and make decisions. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, God and indivisible.
Please be seated. Okay, first item of business, we heard one go off. Turn your phones to off or vibrate, so they don't interrupt the proceedings. The next part of the agenda is public input. And what we ask on this, anyone that wants to address something that is on the agenda, wait until that agenda item is called. Gotcha, didn't they, John? We find it works better if you wait till the agenda item is called. If there's something that is not on the agenda, this is an opportunity for your public input. We ask that you identify yourself, precinct where you live, limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. And so I've got two requests to speak. We begin with Mr. Allen.
Good morning, Judge Calick Commissioners. I'm Richard Allen. I live directly across from Lake Ingram in the Ravine Community. And I needed to bring up a few points that I would like for you to consider for your next agenda. There's a lot of us in the area that are really concerned about the lake itself. There are cars and campers and dead animals, wire fences, metal cattle panels, and possibly even more people in there. There's also dangerous levels of E. coli in there. It's not really safe to use. And that lake is a big part of life in Ingram. Especially, you know, all the kids in the high school, there's not a ton of things in Ingram for kids to do. It's football games, maybe baseball games, et cetera. But, you know, they use the lake a lot for water skiing, for jet skiing, for swimming, kayaking, fishing. They use the backside of the dam as a waterslide, which is a big pull for a lot of them. It's a fun thing to do. There's a lot of decay and smells coming off the lake. You know, it penetrates our houses, our cars, our furniture, our noses. But there's a lot of people that want to come and speak to y'all, particularly in two weeks, at your next meeting on the 25th. And we'd like all of this on the agenda to be discussed. So I understand that there are 27 billion in the state's rainy day fund. They got, I think, over 100 billion from the big, beautiful bill that was just passed. And we need appropriations passed to get those funds rolling, so we can clean up all three of our lakes and our river. Because it's a huge pull for tourism, for people coming in for vacation, for people from up north coming down to get out of the cold and stay here for months, enjoying the river and the surrounding area. And as you know, the river's not very beautiful anymore. And it's going to take time to get that recovered and years and years for it to get back as pretty as it used to be. So we're all really concerned about what's going to happen, particularly to all those cars and campers, et cetera, that are in the lake. Because it's not safe to use. I wouldn't want to water ski out there. I really wouldn't even want to swim in it, even if there wasn't any E. coli or anything like that, because it's just not safe. You don't know whether there's a big sheet of metal sticking up that you could fall on. But we would really like that drained and cleaned up and get it back for the usage that it's been all this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ackman?
Hi, good morning. My name's Scott Eichman. I also am a resident, part-time resident of the ravine. I live in San Antonio. I drove in this morning to try to speak on, you know, my family's behalf. My history with the ravine in Ingram and Shriner College goes back into the 80s. I graduated from there back in 88, played college baseball there. My parents owned this property back in the early 70s. It's been given, passed down from one generation to another, and now to me. We live in a very modest home in the ravine. It's been there over 100 years. It's one of the original fisherman's villages. It's made out of solid rock. I was involved 3:30 in the morning that night that it happened. Was woken up and I was down there trying to do what I can to help our committee by saving the riverfront as far as lawn chairs and stupid stuff, picnic tables. But I saw it all happen, unfold right in front of my eyes. Saw a lot of property damage, everything that we invested in, go away in a matter of hours. I saw things that some of the people here probably saw as well. It was devastating. We helped save some people on the highway that floated right in front of us and got hung up on the guardrail. Everything we put into it, and I can say from the line share, a lot of the work by me and a lot of our residents over the last year is now all gone. Outside of the property damage, there's a lot of emotional damage. We were one of the fortunate ones that didn't lose anybody. We didn't get any property damages in our homes, but it became very close. Luckily, we were about that 35-foot level that it did not creep into, or destroy any of our homes. It got within three feet of getting into his house. But luckily, we're on that curve right there that kind of saved us because we're on a higher plateau. I also am in favor of draining the lake because of economic reasons. We spend a ton of money every weekend. Even though I live in San Antonio, we're here just about every weekend enjoying what the river brings to this community. We put a lot of money into it. We spend a lot of money at all the stores and stuff to help support our economy. I give back to Shriner College. I give back what I can to the volunteer fire department in Ingram. And I know our resources are limited, but I know there's money out there that can help us. Safety is a big part of it. We spend a lot of time. I own a jet ski. I have fun out there, just like everybody else does. Our neighbors have boats. And we want to be able to go into that particular environment without any problems or worrying about potential harm that could happen to the people that we invite there. Draining the river may be a big deal to a lot of people, but I think it's a simple thing for us to recover anything that's inside there. Obviously, I've been a part of two that I can remember when I was a teenager. I've been down in the bottom of that river when it's been drained. It's not the easiest thing to try to get things out of there when it's in that predicament. But it will give us an opportunity to rebuild. Our bulkhead has been destroyed, our docks are all gone. All that stuff takes time. If you have a lot of money, you have the access to do it with the water in there. Our committee doesn't have a lot of money. We need help with getting that river drained, so we can get to that riverfront. Not only to rebuild the stuff, but to get the debris that's been deposited in front of our river that we cannot get out unless we're in the water. We've done a lot of heavy lifting over the last four weeks. I was in it Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the day after, trying to get all the heavy lifting. We have literally nothing left on our riverfront, other than two giant cypress trees and a ton of other stuff that's been deposited on our riverfront. Today, out of sight, out of mind for most of you people that don't live there, obviously, some of you have heard some stories you were selling before you started today. You literally enjoy what the good Lord's given us. And without your help, you guys are in positions to make the big decisions. You've been elected. We need you to make the right decision, figure out how to find funds and money to help us get that river drained, so we can bring it back to what it was. Obviously, you have agendas, you have priorities. This has got to be on your priority list. Like you said before, Mr. Allen, Ingram is a small town. We go to the football games. I'm a big baseball fanatic. I spent my time volunteering little league fields for almost 15 years, staying up to 1:00 in the night, trying to help out. We need you to make the right decision and get that river, that lake drained. It may be a big task, but you got to get it done to make us all feel better. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no one else has signed up?
Harley David Blou, Precinct One, Kirk County. I came to talk about the flood. Nobody was responsible for the flood. Nobody could have known what was going to happen with a flood of that magnitude. I don't blame anyone. And people have misunderstood some things that I've said, thinking I'm blaming someone. I don't. I came to talk about what happened after the flood. And Judge Kelly, you're the top elected official in Kirk County. As such, you are responsible for emergency declarations, oversight of the emergency operations. You've been called out by the Lieutenant Governor of the State of Texas, and he said you're derelict in your duties. I've yet to hear you respond to that. You were supposed to be in charge after the flood. So again, this is after the flood, not during. Regardless of anybody's opinion of Dan Patrick, he is the Lieutenant Governor of the State of Texas, and he singled you out for some pretty serious charges. Abandoning your duties when you were needed most. So for the sake of clarification, I am not talking about after you said you returned from Lake Travis and you were out of pocket for a little while. You made an appearance at the first press conference, then you disappeared for days, and nobody could find you. And that's not just from Dan Patrick, that's from a lot of people in the county that I've talked to. You still have not addressed that. Your behavior shouldn't be swept under the rug, and it can't be. We can't just move on. Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick was either wrong or he was right. There's something to explain it, and you've not addressed it, and you should. You owe us an explanation. The entire state of Texas saw that, if not the entire nation, saw you personally being called out by Lieutenant Governor. I know the rules of the court prevent you from speaking right now and addressing what I'm saying and responding. But it's not a thing that's going away. It can't be swept under the rug. So please, as soon as possible, I would expect that you would have a good... In fact, I think if you had a good explanation, we'd have already heard it. But the whole state saw what happened. We don't, you don't answer the whole state, you answer to the people of Kirk County. And I would appreciate it, for one, if you would clarify that. Tell us just what you were doing that week, and two, after the flood. I would appreciate it. And for those who say it doesn't matter, the judge just has a short time to go, that's immaterial. That's entirely, he has a year and a half to go. He's still the judge, and he left us when we needed him and has never accounted for it. So I hope you will take some opportunity in the future, Judge Kelly, to respond to what Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick has said about you. I would think you would want to clear it up. And I would appreciate clarification. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else sign up to speak? Very well, then we'll move on to Commissioners' comments.
Been a busy week, trying to get everything going down. Commissioner Harris is going to give a good update here shortly on the debris cleanup and where we're at with that. We've, I think, been doing an exceptional job up to this point, all county employees, and trying to get things back to some state of normalcy. It's going to take a while. It's not going to happen overnight. Things that were, comments were made about, those are things that, on the lakes and stuff, there are things that are still being looked into. Appreciate all y'all's comments on that. That is what we're elected to do, is to listen to y'all and to hear you and to move and to act on those things. And so we will move forward in some direction towards that and be able to give updates towards that. I've just been at the EOC, working with the state and FEMA, trying to get things going. So I've been kind of locked down there, so I don't have a whole lot else to comment about.
Okay. Well, just with that lead in, thank you and Commissioner Harris for all you've done at the UOC and all the coordination work, which has freed myself and no doubt Commissioner Holtz to do some other things. So I'll talk a little bit about what some of those other things are here recently. Continuing our welfare checks and talking to the people that have had damage, particular significant structural damage. A lot of the debris cleanup has already taken place. There's still work to be done that way, and questions are being asked. So we're trying to get clarifications out. I am immensely impressed with the progress that's been made on debris pickup and with the whole program. So thank you, gentlemen, for, I know you had significant input in that, so thank you. One of the other things that I've been spending a fair bit of time with, particularly over the last week, was surveying flood damage at each of the aggregate mines along the Guadalupe River, which is predominantly between Kerrville and Comfort. So I visited Mark Marietta's, Kerrville Santa Graville, and Wheatcraft, and also reviewed photos that RA Materials sent me. I'm going to try to get to their site later today or tomorrow. But all have had extensive damage and flooding of their pits. So I'm also going to try to work with a little assistance from my colleague to the right to try to find out who, if anyone, or possibly it'll be our floodplain manager, Charlie Hastings. But I'm trying to get an estimate of the volume of water that was dispersed from the flood. And clearly, it was significant. The area of these aggregate mines that were flooded is tremendous. And so my contention is that those mines were the reason that Comfort was not as severely impacted as areas upstream. So that will be the sole topic of discussion in our next APO Advisory Council meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for September 16th. I think it's of great interest, not only to the aggregate miners, but also to the public. Because they get a bad rap for a lot of things, and here's one circumstance which I believe those mines played a significant role in reducing the damage downstream. Otherwise, we'll hear an item about Lions Park restoration later in the agenda. So I think some good work's coming together there for people who want to help. And that park definitely needs a lot of work to restore it. We also, Flat Rock Park is in similar circumstances. You know, hats off to our maintenance team. They've done a great job of removing debris and the mangled playground equipment and all the other things that were there. All that debris is pretty much gone. So I think it's generally safe to use the parks, but there's just not a lot to use other than walking around or whatever.
There's people fishing there yesterday.
Well, that's a whole separate definition, but anyway, yeah. People are definitely using the parks, and that's fine. But somehow, we have to find a way to return them to their former utility and enjoyment for our citizens. And I'm pleased to say that I've been contacted by the American Legion, and they want to help with Flat Rock Park restoration. So I'm not sure yet what that looks like. But I'll tell you what, I welcome anybody else who wants to get involved and try to help raise funds and contribute to the restoration of all of our parks. Because they truly provide a valued service to the public in terms of enjoyment, calming, peace that comes from being able to walk in a beautiful location, and it will be beautiful again. So we'll see what happens there. That's all I've got.
Right. Well, I believe today is day 31. As far as debris goes, I know we've had over, I don't know, over 50 meetings. We have one every day. Therefore, while we were having two a day, and therefore, a few days, we had three a day on debris removal, a different, what, things. And it's taken a lot of twists and turns. When we first started talking, and I think maybe I said this, you know, Tom and I were in the meeting, said we were overwhelmed, and about the third day of meetings, they said that the state is taking it over. And it's just a huge sigh of relief from Tom and I in that meeting, because that's a huge task. And what's unusual for this is that Tedom took it over. In the past, FEMA has done it all. And I got to tell you, I've been impressed with everything they've done. The only thing that I was kind of, you know, upset about, it took an extra week to get the right of entry farms out for the landowners, and that was because the attorneys, attorneys got involved and stuff like that, but now it's going forward. Through all these meetings, there's been a lot of twists and turns. When we first started talking, they were talking about bringing in big, huge incinerators and burning all this vegetated matter. Once we got the contractors involved, that changed. They said, "We can grind it and move this process along even faster." And that's what's happening. So there's not incinerating, like we first reported. Like I said, things have changed. They're going to be hauling this material to Austin and San Antonio, it looks like, right now. And it's a big undertaking. You can imagine trucking those huge trucks with material, what a bill that is freight-wise and everything else. And so the state's taking it over. Let me say something else, like in my notes before I forget, about the lake draining. That is a huge undertaking and needs to be done. The state police is in charge of that right now. They're the ones that say yea or nay. There will be ongoing discussions, but they're the ones that can pull the trigger and say, "Let's do it right now." And that hadn't happened with them.
And I'm having discussions with them daily about it, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. So that's worded out. We want it, I agree with everything you gentlemen said from the ravine. So like Charlie said, those discussions are going on, but we don't have any updates. We can't say it's going to happen next Monday or whenever. It's going through the state police. So that's something. Another thing in my notes here, there've been discussions about floodplain permits. We've waived, the county's waived those fees. We don't want profit off anybody's angst here. I mean, those have been waived. Harley, if you could beat that drum for us out there, we'd appreciate it. Debris removal, as of yesterday, 25,400 cubic yards of debris had been removed from the right-of-ways, parks, and county properties. The debris removal is going in phases, okay? The first phase was heavily involved with Tech Dot, the right-of-ways, 2739 and 1340. As we got these contractors in, their job was to do the county and city roads and streets. And they've done, that's virtually done, okay? The next phase will be on private properties, which is, they're getting those permits, the right-of-entry farms in. As of yesterday, they had 202 applicants that had turned in their applications for a right-of-entry. 154 have been verified, and 79 inspections have been completed. In other words, they're going to get your farm that you filled out, they're going to come to the property and look it over and go from there. So, and in talking to them, okay? You might have filled one out, and then you're, and then about four miles down the road, you fill one out. They're waiting to get a bunch of people in one area to where those trucks can go and be productive, you know, rather than hopscotch and around the county. So bear with them a little bit, it's going to get done, okay? So that's the next phase. Also, there are another phase, the waterways. They'll get to the waterways. So if you have a property out there and you gave them right-of-entry to come in and get debris off your property, and then you've got riverfront and they can reach out and grab stuff, they'll do that as well, okay? Something you need to realize, though, and we're going to talk about it a little bit later, but you have property, those downed trees and stuff, those are your property, okay? You can do whatever you want with them. You can keep them, sell them, whatever. Or if these guys come in to pick them up, then you just want to say the heck with it, get them out of the way, clean up your property, that's what they'll do. If their equipment comes in and picks it up, then they're hauling it off, okay?
Mark them with blue.
Mark any trees or anything like that in blue, and it'll be saved, okay? They won't take it. But if they go in there and get in the waterway and pull it out, they're not going to pull it out here. And so Harley Blou can keep it on his property. No, they've already done the work. So y'all understand that? You know, the big sigh of relief is getting Tedom come in here and doing this. The other side of the coin is we lose a little bit of local control, but the benefits far outweigh the other, okay? So realize that, guys. Tedom has told us that we're so far ahead of cleaning up debris than other disasters, it's unbelievable. And my challenge to them is, if we're doing such a good job, then you make Kirk County the model going forward for disaster cleanups and stuff. And to tell you the truth, they haven't disappointed me yet so far. So it looks like we're setting an example. Unfortunately, we're having to set the example, but it's being done properly. So with that, that's about all I got.
Just a quick question for you. Will there be another opportunity for private property owners to sign up? I know it was available all last week.
It's still going on.
Is it still?
Still going on. I put some farms out there. I think Nikki, Nikki Caines, I think she picked one up, one of the farms I put up. She, you know, you did, and it's, yeah, it's from, what, eight to eight at those locations?
Yeah, there were two, Center Point Volunteer Fire Department.
Yeah, Ingram Volunteer Fire Department down the hill, behind there. There's a white trailer, Debris Tech, Center Point VFD, and LJ Vineyards in the City of Hunt, right there on 39. So, yeah, it's ongoing. So that's it.
Nobody mentioned the burn ban? We're going to talk about it later.
First of all, I had a text conversation with Mim Kidd this Saturday and learned a lot. He always talks about in disasters, there's three disasters. And I think it's important for the public to understand at least what emergency management theory is. When you have a disaster, there's first the event. That's a disaster. And then the second disaster is mental health, and you're seeing that. My wife's a victim of some of the traumatization of that flood. And if you think about it, everybody's been affected a little bit by that flood, one way or the other. And then the third disaster, we're looking at eyeball to eyeball right now, and that's the money. And then the third disaster, we're looking at eyeball to eyeball right now, and that's the money. Getting the money to be able to clean everything up and try to get us back to normal. Now that said, what Commissioner Harris was talking about is the debris removal. And that's one phase of our recovery is removing the debris. And we've been very blessed that the state of Texas has, there's two contractors helping us get this off of our county roads. TaxDOT handles all the state roads. And in talking with Chief Kidd this weekend, he was telling me about the amount of debris that was expected to be removed. He said one point three million cubic yards. One point three million cubic yards of debris to be removed. And Commissioner Harris has faithfully kept track of these numbers. To let you know what we've done to date, one contractor's done about twenty-one thousand cubic yards. The other contractor's done right at almost fourteen thousand cubic yards. And TaxDOT has done about seventy-five cubic yards. Huh?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand?
Yes.
Well, you can see if it's seventy-five thousand, we've got another thirty to go, something like that. And we also need to talk about the burn ban. The burn ban order that I put out was to put the burn ban on and not let it off. And the burn ban remains in effect for the affected area from high watermark to high watermark with the river. On things outside, we let the burn ban go off so that they can start burning in the rural parts of the county that need to go and burn before everything turns brown and we can't burn. And you'll hear more about the burn ban as we go on. But we remove debris or we burn, and that's kind of the two ways that we get rid of it. Okay. And again, thanks for keeping all these stats. We get a report daily now.
Judge, can you, and just to clarify, you said seventy-five thousand and twenty-five and fifteen, we're about ten percent. We're about ten percent to date of all the debris that needs to be hauled out. That's what he was trying to say.
Okay, let's move on to the consideration agenda. Item one point one, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on a request by Hill Country Dispute Resolution Center to renew the contract with Kirk County to provide mediation services in Kirk County and for funding. Ed Reed usually presents this. He's unable to be here today. I'm presenting it on his behalf. This is a contract that we've done with them every year that I've lived in Kirk County.
I move for approval.
I've got a motion and second to approve renewing the contract with the Hill Country Dispute Resolution Center as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Four zero. Item one point two, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to accept juror donations to Kirk County Veteran Services Office as totaling one hundred and forty dollars to the third quarter. Ms. Olden.
Good morning. These are donations made by jurors, and so I'm just bringing it to you to accept them.
I move for approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and second to accept the donations as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Four zero. Thank you. Next item, one point three, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve payment of directors and officers insurance for Kirk County bail bond board. Ms. Olden.
So I bring this to you every year for the past several years for approving the payment for the insurance that covers the board that is required by statute for the bail bond.
And I move that we approve that payment.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and second, but I do have a question. Okay.
How does this payment compare to last year's?
It's the same. It hasn't changed.
Oh, hallelujah. An insurance rate that didn't go up? I guess it's not insurance, but anyway. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. unanimous. Thank you. Item one point four, consider and discuss an update on matters related to the Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission. Mr. Paces.
Yeah. Not too much activity, and no surprise. We haven't received any kind of responses to our notification letters that were sent out to P U C T or L C R A. We will get another letter out to L C R A today, since they have sent a letter off to the Attorney General's Office seeking support to not disclose information that was requested by Commissioner, Kendall County Commissioner McCall. So we'll, the letter we're sending will quote that, their letter, and might stir things up a bit. I hope it gets additional light on this issue, and we finally convince these government agencies to come to the table to coordinate.
Commissioner, have you tried to get the local L C R A board member to help in any way?
I did try. But he's retired now.
Oh.
I guess his efforts were not successful. We have a, the next meeting for the Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission Board is tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty-seventh. And the Kendall County Commissioners Court will have an agenda item on their August twenty-sixth meeting to discuss Gillespie County's request to join the S R P C. So that's really all I've got for an update for now.
Very good. I'm moving on to item one point five. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve the interlocal agreement between the Regional Public Defender's Office, Local Government Corporation for Capital Cases, and Kirk County to represent indigent capital murder defendants. And I put this on the agenda, let me clarify that there is a regional, Hill Country Regional Public Defender's Office, which is five counties, Medina, Bandera, Kerr, Kendall, and Gillespie. That's not what we're talking about here. This is one that is out of Lubbock, and it is for a regional public defender's office that handles exclusively capital cases. And capital cases, along with debris removal, are some of the most likeliest cause for bankruptcies for counties. So we're glad that the state's picking up the debris removal, and on this one, we do have this public defender's office that we pay into, and then they pay for the attorneys that are appointed to represent these indigents. So it's a pretty important thing. So we've done it ever since I've been on the court, and so I would move that we approve the P D O for the capital cases as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Four zero. One point six, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to ratify and confirm the official agreement between Kirk County and FEMA as done via email from Judge Kelly to Ira Seema Guzman on August the fourth, twenty twenty-five, to proceed with preliminary cost estimate of one million one hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and six dollars and thirty-eight cents to repair the Cade Loop Bridge that was damaged during the flooding disaster. Ms. Putnam.
There's been some new developments since this was put on the agenda, but what I'm asking today is for you to ratify and confirm the Cade Loop Bridge rapid response for this amount that is here on the agenda. However, as of Friday afternoon, that amount has changed. They have now, and I will be coming back next court to ratify and confirm the new amount, which is one million four hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and three dollars, which now includes the engineering costs for the bridge. But at this time.
Can you repeat that number?
One thousand, I'm sorry, one million four hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and three dollars. And that says a Friday.
I was out there yesterday when they were working on it and looking things over. It's an undertaking, but it's a lot better pill to swallow than what we first thought. When we were thinking it was going to be like six million, so.
And for them to add the engineering cost of that's just another blessing with what they're doing to help us right now, so.
Without doubt.
So that's the total cost, right?
Yes.
So far, so you will be seeing me again.
For the bridge. For that bridge, yes, yes.
This allows them to advance the money that we need so we can get going.
And that's what I'm trying to understand. What's the split? Do they pick up everything?
But this allows them to advance it to where we don't have to be.
That's right. We don't have to front the money. It's a good deal.
But we're still on the hook for twenty-five percent?
True.
Yes.
Now, can we approve this with the change to the numbers?
What the agenda item is just asking for what's already been done, and then they won't have to do it again.
But what this really was, was we met with FEMA, and we had the revised estimate on the repair of the Cade Loop Bridge. And Ira, that's the nickname she goes by, Ira Seema. Ira, but she came to me and wanted us to put in an expedited request for this so that hopefully we will have the money in our bank account to be able to pay for this when it comes time. And so we very rapidly got something together and did it via emails. This is, is this a star request?
No.
No?
No, sir. This is directly with FEMA.
Directly with FEMA.
And just to be clear, FEMA ain't in charge here, guys. They're not in charge. We are in charge. They are helping us. They're helping us. That's their role. And they sat in this room, a whole bunch of people, people, and held our hands on a lot of things to make sure that we follow the rules exact, that give us the money quick. That's their role.
It was a roomful there, too.
It was. Tedom and FEMA and everybody in the county.
Yeah, but all we're trying to do right now is ratify what was done, and then we'll bring the new one in at the next meeting.
Yes, next agenda with the revised amount for including engineering.
And there's also going to be an additional project that we've already got before FEMA for the five hundred thousand dollars for the temporary bridge while this bridge is being worked on, and we'll hear back from them on that sometime pretty quick.
I have a meeting with Ira tomorrow at ten o'clock.
And for those people that don't know, the Cade Loop Bridge goes in one side of that neighborhood across the river, and you can come back out, back over by Camp Ria Vista, and there's a low-water crossing right there. And the five hundred thousand dollar temporary bridge is to get across so that you can get out, in and out that way. And we've tried to get both of these requested as quickly as possible. So is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Four zero.
Thank you.
Item one point seven, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the twenty twenty-six Central Appraisal District budget. And this was sent over by Sharon Constantanitis with Kirk County, no, Kerr Consolidated Appraisal Board, Appraisal Board? Kirk and Central, okay. And that's in your packet there under tab seven. So I'll make a motion that we approve their budget.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, just a little concerned about some of the, granted, they're the lower-level appraisers, but some of those increases are like over seven percent. Seem to be excessive now. Offset, chief appraiser, no change, and some of the deputy appraisers are no change, and I respect that. I'm just a little concerned about the significant increases for the lower-level appraisers.
Any other discussion? Those in favor of approving the contract, raise your hand. Opposed? Three one. Motion carries. One point eight, discussion regarding proposed department-questioned budgets and tax rate. Okay. I know Ms. Shelton's got the next three agenda items. I did file as of Friday afternoon a recommended or proposed budget. And all commissioners have provided a copy, and I think, is it even on the website? The first thing I tried to do in putting together this budget was to keep it within the current tax rate. There was a lot of discussion about tax rates. We've got the no new revenue rate. We've got the three and a half percent cap rate. We've got an eight percent emergency rate, all of this stuff. And I was just trying to keep the budget at the same tax rate as it was last year. And that is at forty-two thirty-three cents per one hundred dollar valuation. That's what it was last year. And with that, I was trying to spend some money in the fund balance, because we've accumulated, we've been pretty frugal in saving some money. We've got some money that we can spend, try to spend some of that, while maintaining an acceptable balance in the fund for rainy days. The recommended percentage from TAC is try to maintain three months, or twenty-five percent. So if you, for those of you that have a spreadsheet, and I don't see many spreadsheets out there, but of course you have them. If you look over at the fund balance, it's the last column, and it has the percentage of expenditures in fund balance. And we're starting the year with thirty-three point one four percent in the fund balance. And after the recommendations that I'm making, which is to spend a little over eleven million dollars of our fund balance, of our rainy day fund, that would have us down to twenty-three point five one percent, which is still below the TAC recommended minimum. Now, having said that, the eleven million that we're spending has a lot to do with our disaster damages, which run in about, you find it there in the, in the requested for twenty-five, twenty-six non-recurring major expenditures, about five point five two six million dollars are our disaster damages. And then we have our matching grant for the FEMA funds that we've had to include in here. And so the total expenditures in the proposed budget are sixty-six million dollars plus, with a deficit of about eleven million dollars, and spending eleven million dollars of our existing cash. And in doing that, we had to deal with a number of issues. The first one has to do with our revenues and the exemptions that have already been applied for by the people who were damaged in the flood. And it's going to reduce the market value that they're going to have to pay taxes on because of those exemptions. And we've got uncollectible property taxes of approximately two million dollars in this budget. We've got an additional eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in property taxes for the twenty-five percent match, assuming a five million dollar loss with FEMA at a seventy-five twenty-five match. We've got another five hundred thousand dollar increase in contingency funds for autopsies and recovery warehouses in the airport. In terms of new hires and special requests, we realigned the animal control facility as requested, which included eliminating a part-time kennel tech and an animal control officer and bringing in a new full-time kennel tech. We had an issue with regard to court coordinators, court managers, and court administrators, and they're different. I found out about it when I read the issued statement out of the O A C, the Office of Court Administration. There are different job descriptions for court coordinators, court managers, and court administrators. And we've got one of each, and we had to make some salary adjustments to get everybody on track to where they're supposed to be with regard to their job descriptions. We also included a payroll specialist to help the treasurer's office with payroll. Also included an assistant auditor for the auditor's office. And at the K C S O, we added, gave a raise to the administrative assistant. And then we also had a part-time county clerk position that we put in the budget. And the district clerk had three thousand dollar stipends to each of their employees in this budget, out of the fund that she controls. In the sheriff's office, we added a C I D officer in this fiscal year and another one in next fiscal year for two new C I D officers, which will include their vehicles and equipment. Two new dispatchers. The two dispatchers that we had, that we have, were overwhelmed in this disaster. And we have to come in and just about double the staff on that.
Even, even three would have been overwhelmed, but we're still, you know, we need a third one.
But we're following what the sheriff's office has recommended, and so now we're talking about two more dispatchers, two more patrol deputies, three more correction officers, be moved up to payroll deputy, a correction officer from sergeant to corporal, a correction piece officer to a deputy, a corrections officer, the sheriff's salary increase request, and a new administrative division, which would take everybody one. a new administrative division, which would take everybody one grade up so that there would now be another captain, a lieutenant, and a sergeant at the new administrative division. And then there is also a part-time civil deputy in the sheriff's request. I included all of that in the budget. And it does not include the 198 increases for their assistant DAs and investigators, and I suggest that that be paid out of the SB 22 funds, which have not been used. And with regard to the request for the legal assistant increases, I recommend that those be paid for out of his forfeiture fund, which he has ample funds in. The budget includes a 2% wage adjustment for all employees, outfitting new patrol deputies, new leases for patrol deputy Tahoe and two CID vehicles, a 2026 tax note for new equipment, includes jail scanners and in-car computers and a juvenile probation vehicle, and approximately $5 million in recovery budget, which I mentioned earlier. And that leaves us with the percent of expenditures at the end of fiscal year 25, '26 at 23.5%. And that is the proposed budget that I've made. Now, procedurally, this is a recommended budget. We have a workshop again this Wednesday afternoon, and I think we make the final decision on the budget on August the 25th. But there are a couple of times between now and then that it can be changed. And that is, at that point, it no longer is my recommended budget. That then becomes the commissioner's court proposed budget that will be going to August. So any more, any questions, or getting Ms. Shelton up there later, start explaining the different components that are in this budget?
I mean, I guess most of my comments are about the tax rate, so we can wait until the next one.
Come Wednesday, we'll work on that.
That's, it depends what we intended to accomplish today on that idea.
Now, before we get away from this, one thing that I weighed heavy on my heart about this budget. We've been very frugal, and we have saved money in pinched pennies, and we are actually in fairly decent financial condition to cope with this disaster this year. We're not going to have the sources of revenues and funds that we've had this year are not going to be available next year. And we're not going to have a fund balance big enough to be able to spend $11 million to try to cope with it next year. So what we're talking about here when we ultimately get to tax rates, and just to give you an idea, when Tanya and Bob and I were working on this last Friday, the $11 million translates into right at 17 cents, I think, on the tax rate. One penny on the tax rate is about $650,000. And so we're taking out of our savings 17 cents on the tax rate just this year to not raise the tax rate. That's what it's costing us to do it. And so I'm sure we're going to have a rowdy time wrapping this thing up, but we'll land it.
You can count on it.
We will land it. Any other discussion?
About the budget, maybe the only thing, tax rate aside, we still have $125,000 in for the youth event center for the Ag Barn, its electrical improvements. I'm happy to table that for another year.
Oh, of course.
So we can take that $125,000 out.
I don't think it's in there, is it?
Yes, it is.
No, it's not. I don't think it is.
I just checked. It's right here.
Okay.
Well, wait. Let me see. I might be looking in the wrong column. I am.
I stand corrected. It's not there.
It can be put in.
Yeah. We're not proposing that.
Okay. Well, let's move on to Ms. Shelton.
The only thing I'd add to that was the $300,000 that Noel talked about on Cade Loop is not in the numbers that you're looking at now in the proposed budget. It came in after it was filed. Also, I need to take a look at the, y'all just did it, the Kerr Central Appraisal District, if there was an increase in that amount, it's, I don't think it's been increased in this year's budget either. So there's still going to be fine tuning that's going to happen between now and Wednesday and/or next time that we meet, and I am still waiting on the position schedule, but I should have it by the end of this week.
Item 1.9, consider discuss to take appropriate action regarding the proposed Kerr County budget for fiscal year 25.6.
So did we skip over 1.8?
That's what I talked about.
We just talked about it.
That was a discussion.
Well, again, so we're going to hold off on the tax rate discussion. I guess it's on the agenda.
Okay.
I just feel like we can't be going with the .4233. As a minimum, it has to be the no-new revenue rate. And yeah, I share concerns, but every year, when we look at the budget, we end up significantly underspending what we budget, and we end up with larger reserve balance. Just like last year, I think we had roughly 18 million. Now it looks like we've got roughly 26 million. So, as I say, as a minimum, I think we should lower the proposed tax rate to .4024. I understand that that lowers the revenue balance. We're already under the 25% that TAC is recommending. That would still be over 20%. I don't believe we're going to be looking for any loans or raising capital next year that would make a difference, if there is. Can't find anybody that can actually quantify that difference. And again, I think a reserve balance is for just a time such as this, and then if we eat into it a little bit more, we'll deal with it next year on what we have to do. If we have to raise the tax rate next year, so be it. But I don't think we have to. And so I would propose that we go with a lower tax rate.
I'm being very conservative in my projections. This is potentially an existential dilemma for the county, whether or not we're going to be able to provide county services, public services. And I just throw that out because we'll do this again next year and see where we are.
I agree.
I feel fairly comfortable we can get from here to there. I don't know about from there anywhere else. That's what I don't know about. So, there's no action to be taken. So we'll move on to item 1.10, consider discuss to take appropriate action to set a public hearing on the proposed Kerr County budget for fiscal year 25, '26 for 9:45 a.m. on August 25, 2025, and authorize the county clerk to publish notice of public hearing.
This is per our budget calendar, and this is the same procedure that we did last year.
So I move that we authorize the county clerk to post a notice of the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, four zero. Item 1.11, consider discuss to take appropriate action to set the date and time for the vote on the Kerr County budget for fiscal year 25, '26 for 9:45 a.m. on August 25.
I have a move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion in the second? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay. Let's take a five-minute break, and we will come back, five minutes after 10.
Did you put in a request, Bill?
Next item on the agenda is 1.12, consider discuss to take appropriate action to authorize the county attorney to prepare a petition to release from the extraterritorial jurisdiction, River Star Park of Hill Country Youth Event Center property and the portions of the baseball fields and Flat Rock Park that are outside of the city limits of the city of Kerrville. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, this is something that came to my attention actually through the signage out there for LED signs, which I have no input to one way or another really, but the whole thing came up about us being within the ETJ and city governance over Kerr County, which I do think there's a bit of an issue with, and even visiting with the city administration, they seem to have pretty similar views, and so I would like to make a recommendation that we authorize the county attorney...
Recommendation or motion?
A motion, to authorize county attorney to prepare a petition to release from the ETJ. This is a new law that came in effect a little over two years ago. There's not a lot of benefit, from my views, for us being listed within the ETJ, and I think it gives us a clear definition of governance for the properties. So that's the reason I would like to make that motion.
I'll second. Got a motion and second, to authorize the county attorney to prepare a petition to release from extraterritorial jurisdiction River Star Park, the Hill Country Youth Event Center property, and portions of the baseball fields and Flat Rock Park that are outside of the city limits of the city of Kerrville. Any discussion?
Good speaker.
Dr. Richter?
Thank you, Commissioners, Judge Kelly. Appreciate the opportunity to address you this morning. We have been, you may have noticed that we've been widely, I'm sorry, Bill Richter, 1425 Harper Road, you may have noticed that we've been widely criticized by outsiders. It is now a time for our community to pull together and to solve the problems that are before us. We need all to work together, our city, our county. We need to develop a united front to solve problems. The reason for this request is to erect an outsized or oversized sign at the Agborne, and I believe that that is not something that is in the best interest of the county or the city. This is widely unpopular among the city. It was not a four to two vote by P and Z, it was a unanimous vote to disapprove this petition. The city are the people who are going to use the Agborne, the event center, and make it profitable. We need the city to support this event, and it is not gaining their support by erecting a large sign that is larger than the city of Kerrville sign ordinance has requested. And if you look at cost alone, we've just taken $11 million out of our reserve, but if you look at the cost of these signs, the large sign that's been proposed is in excess of $80,000, and that doesn't include the structure to hang it from. If you went with item number four in your, in the bids, that sign, item number four, is less than half of what the large sign cost, and you also would not have...
We're just talking about the next agenda item.
You'd not have to erect a larger structure to put it on. It could be hung from the current sign.
I think we're, we've got the cart ahead of the horse. This is up 113. Let me call it before you talk. Take your seat, we'll bring you back here in just a minute.
Thank you.
We're one agenda item ahead. Let me get it caught up.
Thank you.
So, that's the time, item at 10 o'clock, item 1.13. Before we go to 113, we need to complete whatever action we're going to take, if any, on 12.
Don't we, we have a motion and a second?
And a second, to approve the filing of a petition to be removed from the ETJ as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. 4-0. Now we'll go to item 1.13, Bill. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to accept the open bid from Core Displays to replace the existing marquee sign at the Hill Country Youth Event Center. Bids were opened on June 23, 2025, and Core Displays was the sole bidder on the project. Jake Williamson.
Good morning, Your Honor, Court. Thanks for your time today to discuss this. I'm pleased to be here at the culmination of a roughly three-year project. We identified the sign as a project three years ago to replace as it was becoming obsolete at that time. Of course, that process has been longer than most of us anticipated, but we are here today and looking forward to an outcome. We know landscapes can change at all times, but we still do believe that this project is relevant and vital to the future outlook of the event center. At all times, we were hired to do our diligence to lessen the burden on the taxpayer of that event center. The only way to do that is to mainly increase revenues. We continually look for revenue streams at the event center. We obtained a liquor license, we have a vending deal with Pepsi. To do those things, this sign is another step in the same view, in the same line, to garner more revenue for the event center to lessen the burden. Furthermore, the monies allocated for this sign are not taxpayer dollars. My company, Oakview Group, in our last extension, invested the money for this sign to Kerr County, to pay for that sign because we are a partnership and believe this fit well with the views and future use of the event center, as opposed to other items that were discussed. We feel like this brings the most positive and most rapid increase in revenue that we can find for the event center while also adding to the current events we have and attracting new clients, new events, in a very competitive market. The event center is already over 10 years old, there are already new event centers being built, there are already people putting investment dollars in other venues around, and we want to make sure to stay relevant, to stay up to date, to stay maintained. So with that, we met, and the sign committee decided on the option number one that was bidded through Core Displays. With add-ons, the total spend would be $96,085. That's for the sign, the controls, to update the sign that's there now with LED bulbs and a new skin. So, not, any sort of, you know, won't have the same footprint as the Tybee sign, you know, the whole monument sign itself, but option number one was a six-by-12 sign, which is the same size as the digital sign that's at Tybee Stadium, which already exists, which is already in town. Furthermore, due to concerns from other people, the city of Kerrville does not have any dark skies commitments in their sign code. We don't know why. There seems to be a very good contingent of great folks out there that are really wanting to make sure this happens. We've already proactively got with the sign manufacturer. This sign is completely dimmable, down to zero. It falls within all the, I believe they're called nits, I could have got that wrong, for the brightness at night. All those will be well with under the dark skies initiatives that we were shown at the city council hearing, or P and Z committee hearing, and look forward to all those things being implemented, working with the community to make that balance. We understand that there's people for and people against, and we're here to meet in the middle, but to drive forward.
I move for approval.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second to approve?
Yeah, so Jake, this will meet up to all the standards of dark skies.
That is correct.
Jake, remind me, who is on the, you mentioned the committee that made the selection and recommendation?
Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Jones.
And that was one of our primary concerns for Bill and others, is to make sure that we abide by those technical specs, because we don't want it to be a problem.
Sure.
You know, we'd like to make sure that we abide by that, and for whenever y'all's, whenever the city's policies do kick in, we should be in compliance with all of those rules.
We put our best foot forward.
Ready to hear the stand?
The only other question I'm going to have is, you know, the budget funds that comes out of this year's budget, or how are we paying for this?
That's correct. These funds have been allocated in this fiscal year's budget for this specific project.
And the timing to complete it, if we agree to award a contract?
It'll be tight. Within 60 days of today is when the contract, it says, is supposed to be done.
Dr. Richter? Now we're talking about the sign.
Thank you. Bill Richter, 1425 Harper Road, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. We heard the option one, which is over $96,000. Option number four was not talked about, which is in compliance with the city's sign code and what the citizens of Kerrville would like to see. You'll see these signs all over town, they do a great job of getting their message out. Advertisement can be placed upon them as well as signage, and option number four is $40,000 or less. So, we're looking at a major amount, and what's not included in that $96,000 is the new structure to erect a six-by-12-foot sign, which is also going to be a major expense. A 32-square-foot sign, which is the city's sign code, could be hung from the present sign at the Agborne, which is a great structure, a great advertisement for the, for the youth event center, and that sign could be hung from that without having to spend additional monies on erecting a new structure. Again, I'd like to just mention that you're dependent, we are dependent, all of us, on the city of Kerrville, because most of the events come from the city of Kerrville. So we want to make sure the city of Kerrville feels like that this is a sign structure that everyone can approve within our city. Like Jake said, this is a competitive market, and we want to compete for those events because we want the Agborne, we want the Youth Event Center to be successful. My family helped build it, and I helped build it, and we want it to be successful, but we don't want to have anything that would negatively distract from it. Thank you.
Before you leave the podium, let me ask some questions. I really wasn't exactly sure, what is it that the city did? What action did they take?
I'm sorry?
What action did the city take, the city council take?
It had not gone before city council, it went before planning and zoning, and all four members that were at planning and zoning spoke against it and voted against it, and there was, they were not equivocal. They felt like this was not in the best interest of the community.
Is it all about the sign, or is it about the ETJ status?
It's about the sign alone.
The, the staff recommended it, the sign.
They recommended the sign?
Yeah, they had no problem with it.
And so P and Z overruled the staff?
Right.
What were the staff's objections? Just, did it comply with the code?
They felt like it was not in compliance with the 2050 plan.
Well, where I'm coming from on this is, the city and the county have come a long way in the last decade, being able to cooperate and jointly look out after the best interest of the citizens of the city and of the county outside the city limits. And it sounds like to me that, I don't want to use the word harsh, but decisions are being made which are impacting each other...
Right.
...without being, from my point of view, fully vetted. Why haven't, why haven't we talked to one another about this? I haven't had any discussion with them at all, and I don't know if anybody else on the court has, but before we go to battle over something, I'd like to sit down and talk about it.
That's the way we do things in, in West Texas.
And I don't, I don't want to battle.
Yeah, I haven't, the size of the sign seemed to be, the whole thing was the size of the sign. The reason that we looked at this particular sign is because of the six-millimeter pixel pitch on it. It gives us a lot finer definition for the things that will be there at the center, whether it's city or county or whoever, and I'm not sure about your remark about the city hosting most of the events out there. Is that true?
No, I don't think so.
It seems like most of the events that I have attended have originated within the city.
But either way, like I said, we're, this is not a going-to-war type thing with the city by any means.
Not at all.
Let's sit down and talk about it.
We already have talked about it.
Well, we have. I've talked to city council members, and I haven't had anything negative about removing it from the ETJ that gave us the authority. As far as the sign itself is concerned, I haven't talked to anybody.
Okay, yeah.
So, to answer that.
Yeah, I think the sign is what the issue is.
Because it never got to that level. I thought, from my understanding, it was city council approved. Correct, Heather?
So, this has been, Jake, we've been talking about this sign for all along.
Too long.
With, since Commissioner Lex was here, it's been a couple of years, and we've been talking about what kind of sign, the size of the sign, what are the core out there. And we've been through a couple of city managers since we started this conversation, and here we are. So that just tells you how long it's been since we've been talking about this. And what I understand is that P and Z united in the face of the city staff's recommendation to authorize the sign that we're requesting, and that, I don't think that it necessarily initiated the ETJ conversation, but the only reason they have authority is because we're in the ETJ.
And, and... Let me be clear. I don't understand why we need to be in the ETJ of the city.
Exactly.
And so I don't think there's a whole lot of relevance for that, and the fact that we choose not to be in the ETJ doesn't bother me in the least.
That's right.
But apparently, we're deciding the sign issue, or there's some kind of proxy issue behind the scenes here involving the sign.
This talk's been going on forever. We're just trying to give Jake all the tools he needs to be profitable out there and generate income and what have you.
We're definitely into promoting that venue.
Yes, exactly. And that's for the good of the city and everybody else. It helps the restaurants, it helps the hotels, and fuels everything else.
But I'm not sure why we need more discussion, Bill, because if it's going to be, if it's going to be dark sky compliant, isn't that your ultimate goal?
The ultimate goal is having a sign that is, that meets the city's sign code, because there's been years of work on that sign code. It is not something that is just picked out of the air. It was carefully studied, carefully negotiated, and...
No.
There's a lot of signs within the city of Kerrville that are compliant, that do a great job. You see the one that's just erected, Notre Dame, the one across the street at the Calo Center, the one at Five Points, that's just been erected. There's a lot of information that can be conveyed on a 32-square-foot sign.
I guess what I'm confused with, was Mr. Jones' comment. If the sign in question, the big sign, the option one sign, is compliant with night sky requirements, dark sky requirements, what's offensive about it? Just the code?
I guess it's too big or something.
If the larger sign is more light, larger sign is more, you're going to be more attracting people as they're driving down the road at 55 miles an hour. Safety issues have been brought up. This four-by-eight sign was really selected carefully because of its sign, and the city felt like that was an appropriate sign.
Bill, have you seen those out on, on the interstate that TechStop put up? Those are pretty large digital signs out there, and the 75 miles an hour out there on the interstate too.
Another good point that Jacob tried to make is within reason what the request was to P and Z, and so the proposed sign is no bigger than that, and is that tied to high school students?
Right. Okay.
Question for Jake. It was mentioned that there would be additional cost for the structure to be able to support the option one sign. Is that correct or not?
The initial plans that were put before P and Z, we had to come up with a diagram. So with that, we copied the Tybee sign diagram. With the bid, we're actually maintaining the same structure that's already there. We're just adding this LED sign to that structure. It's completely compliant. There's no additional cost.
So there's no additional cost?
That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sensing a lose-lose here. I don't know. I'm ready to vote.
I think it's a win-win.
Okay. We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
No.
Those in favor of accepting and opening, accepting the open bid of Core Displays to replace the existing marquee sign at the Hill Country Youth Event Center as presented, raise your hand.
Option one.
That's three. I'm going to abstain. I'd still like to sit down and try to work it out with them, but...
Thank you, Judge.
Okay. So with that, we'll move on to item 1.14, which is, consider discuss and take appropriate action to amend the existing not-to-exceed contract with Waterway Engineering LLC, Court Order Number 41393, from $30,000 to $50,000 for hydrologic and hydraulic engineering services related to the July 4 Guadalupe River flooding disaster. Charlie Hastings.
Thank you, Judge. As you all know, on July 14th, the court entered into a contract with Waterway Engineering, it was a not-to-exceed contract of $30,000. It was just a...
Have you seen the contract?
It was a guess. We didn't know how much it was going to cost his services. So far, he has expended $35,000 and some change. He has given us an invoice for under 30 to honor the $30,000 not-to-exceed, but we're not done with him. We still need him. His services have been tremendous. The engineering program that he has put together is a model of the flood. It has been instrumental in the search and rescue effort. The state police have been using it extensively because of that, and then our office, the floodplain office, has been using it. It helps us understand, and it helps us to explain what happened. And it also validates this was bigger than a thousand-year event. I can't underestimate that or understate that. All that to say, you guys know I have a knack for knowing how things kind of cost and maybe how much we should add, and I'm saying, just, can we change it from $30,000 not-to-exceed to 50? That way, he can invoice us for the amount that he has on his, he wasn't going to give us an invoice for. It's just not right. He did the work, needs to be paid for. And that gives us about, you know, 15, $12,000 left, 14, I think it's 14, 14 and some change for the things that we still need him to do in the coming weeks and months.
I'll move to approve as presented. Got a motion?
I'm going to, I'm not going to approve that motion, but I've got one to make.
Well, I'll second the motion so we can see what the issue is.
Well, I mean, I think the issue is, is right now, we're, and I appreciate everything. Charlie's worked very hard on all this, and he's, he's one of my heroes in this, but, and so is Michael. But we approved a contract for 30,000. It's already exceeded to 35, and I think as long as we leave an open amount in there and move that to about 40,000 instead of 50, it would be a little more palatable for me to where if we need him in the future, we still have him on board, not, and reduce that number by about 10,000 from what you proposed, is what I would like to see.
You open to amending your motion? Well, I want to hear from Charlie.
Okay.
Charlie, I mean, would 40 cover it?
I'm just going to grant and let y'all know, I told y'all so on some stuff for the animal control facility, but I appreciate what he's saying. I would love to come back here in a few weeks and say I told you so, but it's okay. 40,000's fine.
If you come back in a few weeks, maybe we can, we need to amend it.
Yes, sir. I understand.
There's always that option.
Yes, sir. It's always an option.
And I'll just ask one other question. Could any of this service have been requested as a star?
It was, and...
But they wouldn't pay?
Well, that's probably another discussion we could have outside, but I can tell you what the results of that were, and beyond a shadow of a doubt... Well, um, that's probably another discussion we could have outside, but I can tell you what the results of that were, and beyond a shadow of a doubt, that same evening I said, emergency, we need this guy hired. What we got from the other was not adequate at all.
And he's drawn, done a tremendous job.
Yes, he has.
And it could be that the request, uh, was not specific about what was needed, but we do have a debris line that's been shot in, all the high water marks have been shot in, and it, that's just a paper map, that's not a model. It doesn't do what we needed this to do, and this man did this all on his own, nobody asked him to, he presented it, and it was stunningly accurate, so that's why he got hired on the spot.
Okay, but we, we don't wanna make a practice of paying for anything that we didn't ask for, but, but I will, I will amend my motion, um, to amend the existing not-to-exceed contract with Waterway Engineering LLC from thirty thousand to forty thousand dollars for hydraulic and hydraulic engineering services related to the July fourth flood. I will amend my second, thank you. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, I'll get the man paid up and maybe we can make a couple more phone calls if you want to pull it out. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Charlie.
Item one fifteen, consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding cypress logs on county property, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, and this is pretty specific, talking about county property, uh, and, you know, I mentioned earlier, I went out to Cade Loop yesterday, and we have, county has, owns property between Ingram Dam and Cade Loop. And there's still lots of debris there, what have you, and that's what I can see, that's the only place where we actually have cypress logs on county property. Uh, the parks have been cleaned up and what have you, and, and what have you, so, uh, there's been talking early on and, and different times about memorializing, you know, logs or, or the wood, getting it in the proper hands, and, and that's been identified as far as what to do, you know, make a piece of furniture or something, maybe something we can put on, out there on the courtyard that mem- memorializes this event, uh, so, you know, I, I just threw it on there for discussion, for everybody to talk about. Uh, we definitely don't wanna sell them, I mean, uh, nothing, the county wouldn't wanna profit off these. Now, the logs I mentioned earlier, uh, if they're on your property, you do whatever, uh, you know, uh, David Carpenter's an excellent, uh, got source that has a mill that can makes things out, out of the wood and what have you, and love to see him get as many as, as he can, uh, uh, going forward, but as far as the, the county property, uh, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I, I will tell you that most of the stuff that would, that, that would be there would be in the waterway, and, 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 uh, the contractors that the state has hired are not gonna double handle that for us.
Right, right.
If they, if they go out there and they grab a hold of it, then, then it's gone.
Well, what I was looking at was not in the waterway, it, it's, uh, it's just a jumbled mess, and it would have to be gone through some way or another, uh...
But even at that, are we gonna pay a contractor then?
Well, I, I wouldn't want to, uh, to do that, maybe somebody could snag a log or something, uh, and then we put in the hands of somebody, uh, possibly David, uh, uh, I'm sure something could be worked out. So it's just for thought, go ahead.
I, I have a friend who is a wood turner. Sure. And a big cypress tree washed up on her property down just by, beyond Center Point, and she was delighted to inform us that she was keeping the log. She's gonna work it, and if it's on her property, I think she gets to keep it.
Of course, absolutely, absolutely.
That was my opinion, Derek.
That's right, you bet.
Well, they marked it with blue.
Yeah.
Blue paint or blue flag or whatever, I think part of the, the concerns that even Charlie was having was, was that, uh, there's, there's a lot of rumors out there, I don't know whether they're true or not, that these logs are worth forty to a hundred thousand dollars, and, and they're saying, what are the public gonna say if we're letting them pick it up and haul it off and destroy it? And are we being responsible at that point? Uh, but that's when you bring in the questions, is do we, do we have the ability to handle that stuff ourselves? Uh, is it something we should be messing with, and, and on top of that, the market price is gonna drop a lot with this. Well, but should we be in that, should we be doing that? And I, I don't have an answer.
There are some other considerations about moving, um, public property to private entities or people, and then also liability issues for allowing the, the public to come on other property to remove the cypress logs. So I haven't, I didn't know that that was part of the discussion today, so I don't really care to give you guys any advice, either of those topics today, but I can in both cases.
You know, I can't say for sure, but as well as these contractors have been to work with, I bet you I could tell them, snag us one log, set it, we'll paint it blue, set it off the side, when they go in to do all that debris removal on our county property.
So it's not, the question isn't about allowing people to come retrieve it, it's just about yours?
No, no, we, we're not allowing people to come onto any of our county properties to get stuff, but I, I, I would think that, uh, these contracts have been so good to work with, that we could say, snag one, two, set it off the side, and then if somebody, then we could, uh...
I, I have a feeling there's a lot of other contractors that would be happy to volunteer an excavator to go through and, and snag several of the large cypress, 'cause I have received a number of requests from some faith groups, for example, that would love to carve some angels.
I understand that, you know...
Another group wanted to carve benches, that, you know, again, like you mentioned, to memorialize this, and, and I'm in favor of keeping the option open for that.
I remember the, the big flood in Bandera, uh, a lot of cypress wood ended up at, at, uh, a, in the hands of a man that did, made a lot of furniture and stuff, and I got a beautiful mural, mirror made, uh, framed, uh, out of cypress wood from him, that was...
So is this gonna slow down our operation?
No, it wouldn't, no, not at all, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna do that, so I'm not, you know, I don't know, but I just quit, put it out here for food for thought, that, that we need to talk about, and, and I don't think we even have to make, do any action today.
And I, and I respect that, but my concern's a little bit more legal in nature, when the state, uh, submitted these contracts, uh, for bid, and there's a scope of work, uh, contemplated within those contracts, I don't know that those contractors...
I understand that, and I can address that at one o'clock today.
Okay, and then the other thing that concerns me is, I've made this arbitrary distinction between the affected areas and the unaffected areas being the high water marks. And I will defer to the county attorney and, and, and our county engineer as to ownership of what's in that floodway, that waterway, uh, I'm not sure who owns that. I suspect the state of Texas does, quite frankly.
That's the big discussion about property, whether it goes to the middle of the river, or goes to the edge of your boundary.
Well, when there's water in it, we know it goes where the water is, no.
Yeah, yeah, that's been my argument as well, I don't think that we have a dog in that.
But I, I'd certainly want to, some smart lawyers to look into that and tell us what we ought to do.
I don't think that that's what Commissioner Harris is talking about, right? It sounded to me like he was talking about, um, cypress trees that are already on county property, so it doesn't deal with what's in the waterway or what's on any other properties that are ours. So I think that's the question, and it's not what's in the waterway.
Yep.
Which we've been able to recover, what, like, was it five or ten logs, uh, so far, just because somebody was nice and was setting them aside, and they said, this is on county property, are you guys gonna take it or not? We said, absolutely, it belongs to the taxpayers.
Well, we can't, yeah, we can't do that yet.
We're waiting for you guys to tell us what to do with it, it's set aside.
Okay.
It's over at Cade Loop, we, we own property for Cade Loop Bridge, county bought it a long time ago, and, you know, there's logs over there, down, if you go down there, you're gonna see them.
Do you have a place to store it?
Some of them are ours, and some of them are, uh, we don't own everything down there, you know, but we just wanna know what to do with it.
I don't think we have equipment big enough to lift it.
The, the, this stuff is small enough, we could put it on a trailer, and we could haul it and do something with it, it's, it's not a tremendous amount, but it starts the discussion, what do y'all want us to do?
Do you have a place to store it?
Yes, of course.
Are those, are those number of logs you've got enough to do whatever it is you're thinking you want to do?
Well, if we, if y'all say keep going, then once...
Charlie, why don't you go up there?
Okay. Been here for a long time, I should know better, right? Okay, so, um, I think right now we have five or six logs, a couple of them are cypress, there's a sycamore, there's an oak, um, and they could be milled, they're nice, straight, long logs, that's why they're desirable. Uh, they're not big, massive, eight-foot diameter cypress, we, we couldn't handle something like that anyway, uh, these are, these are easy to handle, um, and they're, they're just been set aside because the, the folks that were doing their own sorting said, that's on county property, and so they painted them for us special, set them aside, nice and pretty, and said, we know this belongs to the taxpayer, and so we're just asking, what do you want us to do with it? And that'll kinda set the stage for if there is anything else that we can manage, Road and Bridge, 'cause Road and Bridge has some equipment to do things like this to some degree.
Part of this, uh, is for me, you know, go to our next debris meeting at one o'clock and, and start that discussion, so I, you know, throw, see what they have to say, our contractors and stuff, and then we can go from there. Uh, but it's food for thought, and that's all I wanted to generate today, really, and thank you for your input, and, uh, but that area there is about all we have left with any, uh, cypress wood logs on it.
Probably so, 'cause everything else has already been cleared out.
That's right.
It was dangerous where it was at, needed to be removed, hanging off of the bridge or whatever, things like that, but, um, you know, there's enough with just that small amount. You make tables instead of furniture for the courthouse, that would be pretty easy to do.
You know, my thoughts is we decide, uh, what direction do you wanna go as far as something, if we get somebody to do that for us, and then he can have the rest of it, to make whatever he wants, you know, that would be his payment for making the county something that we could memorialize.
I think we're gonna have to get legal involved.
Well, of course we would, we would, but we gotta start that discussion.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think we need to keep, keep the options open and hang on to that stuff, um, and then it's a matter of how we decide who we might allow to take that, and, you know, what they might do with it, and, and who the ultimate recipients would be of it, but, uh, I think it shouldn't cost the taxpayers, county or the taxpayers, any money, but I think there's plenty of people willing to volunteer, uh, to do something that would be a lasting memorial.
We'll all think about it again, and we'll talk about it all.
I don't wanna see this conversation turn into the value of that wood.
No, 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 it's not at all.
Okay.
Could we get direction just on the four or five logs we have now, just so they're not sitting out there and they disappear overnight?
Oh, well.
They're, they're not crazy valuable, but they're something.
How you gonna move them?
Stick them on a trailer and take them to the yard.
County, Road and Bridge can handle it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I would go ahead and do that, then. Safe, keep, safe, keep those, those logs.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Kelly's in here saying she can do it.
Well, I don't think we have a...
Would you want us to come back when we have another five or six, and, and say we, we have, we found some more of these, or, that's what we're asking today, if, if, if you want us to just, just fill these, what we've got right now, and then drop the subject from this point forward, we just wanna know what to do.
I would say, uh, I make a motion that you...
I don't think you can make a motion there.
I think this is clear as well, okay, it's not appropriate action.
Well, but, the agenda item, uh, consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding cypress logs on county property. There's those four or five pieces that Road and Bridge should be able to...
Up to ten, I remember, but I saw a picture, and it didn't look like there were ten in the picture, but there's, uh, maybe there's two pictures, it's been a couple of weeks.
Where I'm coming from, keep what we have safe while, while we struggle through this, uh, but as far as telling you what to do in the future, you just have to bring it to us as it happens.
Is that a motion?
Yes. I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, we allow Road and Bridge to, uh, haul those logs that Charlie is discussing, and put them to, take them to one of our yards, uh, until we decide what to do with them, okay?
All second motion. Got a motion and second, and you have a discussion, those in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Took a village, but we got it done.
Okay, item one point sixteen, consider discuss the status of the City of Ingram Police Department and Kirk County Sheriff's Office responsive to calls within the City of Ingram, Sheriff.
Uh, in light of some information I received, I thought it was time for another update in reference to Ingram Police Department, uh, and I know they just recently posted something, I, I don't know where, uh, that was, Tom, but can you kinda refresh me what, okay, you got a letter, Judge, okay, and what, what class?
No, actually, Harris got the letter, we just got copies.
Are they a Class A or B?
You got a letter?
They're a Type A.
They're a Type A, okay.
I hadn't seen it.
So to be totally transparent for the city, I... Uh, they're a Type A, and I, I've, I've had these discussions with our county attorney before, which I don't understand, they're municipality, but they don't have to have a police department. The frustration for me, they do have a police department, that, that's, that's where I come from, but I'm gonna go over some stuff and some numbers for y'all, uh, just kinda give you an update, uh, where we're at, uh... Uh, my understanding, the police department's back down to two people, uh, I know they have a special city council meeting at noon today, I've noticed they have an executive session, executive sessions in reference to personnel matters regarding, uh, IPD employee, it's my understanding the chief has resigned. It's also true that they just have two officers, is what I'm hearing, uh, I've had six of, six of seven of the chiefs there tell me they don't intend on being a twenty-four-hour service any, anymore. You know, that'd be nice for me to know by somebody officially, uh, when I took office, it was an eight-man police department, we didn't have any problems. Since, since IPD Chief Byron Griffin has not, since he hasn't been there, it's never been the same, it's my understanding they're funded for five positions, but I'm not totally positive on that. To me, it takes at least six people to properly run that police department, it's my understanding IP, the IPG, IPD chief has not been there since, uh, August the first of this year. I require Ingram Police Department every month to send me a schedule so I know what to expect, it's my understanding they have a new lieutenant overseeing IPD now, I have not yet met him. It would probably be a good idea to get with the sheriff who's helping cover the city, one thing I will not do is follow up on their investigations. I made it clear to all the chiefs, we will help with their calls, but we won't follow up with their investigations. What I wanna do, just kinda give you a, a, a quick idea why I don't do that, uh, since I've taken office, uh, January one of twenty-one, uh, my CID, and this is CID only, has got one thousand, six hundred and one cases they've received in that time, I won't go into a whole lot of detail, but with those cases following too, there's cases cleared by arrest?
Judge.
Okay, but today, they have three hundred and three open cases, when I say open cases, I divide it between six guys, we'll go up, uh, when we get to seventh and eighth guy. But that's, that's cases they work on every day of some sort, maybe takes a little time, a lot of time, but there's also closed cases, there's cases cleared by exception, cases filed with the prosecutor, cases that are suspended, and cases that are unfounded, so basically what I'm saying is, you know, our guys stay very busy taking care of the cases that happen out in the county. Then we'll go on to calls for service, here's some stats here, uh, that I wanted to run by y'all, this is only, I run all my stats on our budget year, October, you know, O- October, not on a calendar year. So, from October till the end of July thirty-first, there's been two thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine calls for the City of Ingram. Kirk County Sheriff's Office has handled one thousand, eighty-one calls, IPD has handled one thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight, we've handled pretty much about forty-three percent of the call, forty-three point six percent of their calls, okay, us helping. To give you an idea, they have two thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine, as of today, Kirk County Sheriff's Office is at twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven, okay, we're, we'll be, in addition to helping, helping them.
What was that number, twenty?
Twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven, that's of this morning, that's how many calls for service Kirk County Sheriff's Office has handled.
That includes Ingram?
Yes.
Does that count in wide service?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So, okay, just a quick, a quick update, I know y'all get, probably get tired of hearing it, I, I was in court here less than a week ago, we had two hundred and fifty-three mental health transports, today we're two sixty-one, we picked up eight in less than a week, it just continues to grow. You know, I wanna say this court's been great to KCSO, y'all basically gave us all the tools to do our job, and what I tell you, when people call and they want a deputy, they want a deputy... And what I tell you, when people call and they want a deputy, they want a deputy there quick, and we've been able to provide that service. As you know, as you just talked about, Judge, it's not cheap. You know, y'all gave me an additional million-plus dollars probably this year to take care of that. And in that million dollars did not include taking care of Ingram Police Department. I don't have the answers for IPD, but as sheriff, I have a responsibility to keep the community safe. Do we just keep going? Do we negotiate contract with the city? They pay for our dispatch services. These deputies aren't free. Each deputy's about $200,000. That's crazy, when you take their salary, outfit in that deputy, a vehicle, and equipped in that vehicle, it's right at $200,000. You know, we work with Kerrville Police Department all the time, you know, we don't, we don't have this issue with Kerrville Police Department. You know, we assist them and they assist us. But basically, it kind of opened for discussion this time. I know they're a Class B, like, or Class A, Type A municipality. They supposedly don't require law enforcement. It's frustrating that they do have a police department, but...
Sheriff, the way they, the way they have worded this letter to us is that they feel like the, and it could be true, they believe the primary responsibility for law enforcement rests with you. And if that's the case, we're gonna have to re-approach the way we handle things, right?
Yes, sir, I mean, and everything y'all have given me in all these years, it's every year, you know, I come to y'all. You know, I've never come to y'all saying, "Hey, you know, we need to, you know, staff up to take care of Ingram Police Department," because they are funded for five positions, you know, I expect them to take care of the city. But if that, that's a discussion for another day, if that's gonna happen, I'm just looking, you know, I know I'm elected official and can do whatever I want, but also, you know, have a responsibility to the community. They, they are county citizens even though they're in the city. All I can do is compare it to the City of Kerrville, we don't get calls, we may assist them or back them up. But I guess someday we gotta get to the bottom of it.
Sheriff, it's been a revolving door as far as law enforcement for the City of Ingram. How many chiefs have they gone through since you've been in?
Seven.
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 One sheriff.
Well, we've got the same area and some other areas. Heather, if you would, wouldn't mind checking too, because they're projecting that Charlie is their floodplains administrator, and he is not. And, and, and the last floodplains administrator they had was John Hewitt. And so I'm wondering if that falls under the same classification of being, for the type of municipality or? Maybe that's where the, maybe that's where the misunderstanding is between us and them, on some of these areas of governance?
I think that the mayor's probably right in his letter. Um, I also think that Charlie, there have been several emails around lately about the floodplains administrator, that Charlie's been involved in, and that they have, if they're one designated now.
Well, they just projected last week it was us.
Also, that's what we're obligated to do in the community rooms as they are, if they're type A.
Right, right.
Well, when I saw this agenda item, I sent the mayor a text and said, "Hey, this is on the agenda. Like to see you come to the, the meeting and what have you," but they sent the letter instead.
Okay.
Well, just y'all know, I mean, and I appreciate everything y'all have done. Y'all, y'all have gave us everything we need to do the job, but I'm trying to get two, two deputies in the west part of the county to, you know, take care of county people, we'll also take care of the city people, but, but it's frustrating, you know, to be able to distribute manpower properly. But like I said, this is just for discussion.
Yeah, that's quite an issue, if we're gonna be the primary law enforcement there.
Yeah, that, that, I'm not asking, that's, you know, five more guys or six, you know what I mean? You know what I mean? We don't want to go there.
Well, they kind of want us to go there.
Keep going.
Yeah, disappointing, I know it's frustrating on, on your part, on your part and your deputies' part. But, anyway.
They have been less than cooperative.
Yes, sir. Thanks.
Thank you, Sheriff.
No action to take then, or?
No. No, it was just discussion.
Okay, next item is 1.17, consider to discuss and take appropriate action to approve and authorize the county judge to sign agreements with Weaver Technologies to provide IT managed services. Services would center on advanced level engineering technologies, capabilities, and should be, should, should the need arise. Service time is billed or paid for in the block hours to use at our discretion. Mr. Tennis.
Morning, Court. Yeah, this is just a, a follow-up. All the Ts and Is have been taken care of for our agreement with Weaver Technologies to provide managed services when we need it.
Any motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Seconds?
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve the contract with Weaver's Technology as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Four zero.
Thank you.
1.18, consider to discuss and take appropriate action to support the East Kerr County Center Point Riparian Recovery Committee.
Hey, Lou.
Pardon? No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Consider to discuss and take appropriate action to support the East Kerr County, East Kerr Center Point Riparian Recovery Committee operating under the Kerr County Water Alliance in their efforts to progress the development of a comprehensive plan and budget for the restoration and improvement of Center Point Lions Park, which was heavily damaged by the July 4th flood.
Thank you, good morning. My name is Katie Graham, and I am at 542 Kelly Street, Center Point, Texas. I'm here today representing East Kerr Center Point Committee that operates under the Kerr County Water Alliance. I'm also here as a Center Point resident and a business owner, mother that has children that deeply care about our natural resources and our water and our parks. We're here today to talk about Lions Park. And we're here with a bunch of Center Point residents that also very much care deeply about the restoration of our park in Center Point. There's been a kind of a grassroots effort that's come together to reimagine what the Lions Park could become. And moving forward, we've kind of developed a plan, which you can see, which is very basic. I created that on Canva, that rebuilds the park in a way that is flood resilient, has green space preservation, riparian recovery, pollinator gardens, natural placecapes. I'd love to get a hold of some of those Cypress logs to use for some, we have some woodworkers in Center Point that are kind of working on that as well. So I'm here today to ask for an agreement from the city to move forward. We need to...
County.
I'm sorry, did I say city? I meant to say county.
County. I didn't know what you meant.
We're, we're moving forward with, with grant funding. And in order to raise grant funding, we need some sort of agreement from the county that says that the conversation has been started. This could be a resolution, a memorandum of understanding. It doesn't hold the county any way responsible for financial part of it, or it doesn't say that the county has approved any designs or construction should begin. It just is something that we have as a placeholder to give to any organizations that we're seeking grant funding from.
Katie, I, I applaud your efforts as well as the other folks in Center Point that want to get involved and do this. I think that's wonderful. We, considering our budget constraints, we, we desperately need help. And the county's ability to, to do much is pretty impaired right now, and it would probably be many years before we get around to it. So I, I think it's wonderful what you're doing. You know, I just want a couple of things. I mean, I, it's difficult to approve an MOU today because we don't have a draft document to review, and you don't have anything, I take it?
I don't have that.
Yeah, so, or, or a resolution. I don't know if just having a court order that, you know, we make a motion, which I'll be happy to do, and assuming if it gets approved, is that good enough? A court order that, that says we support the efforts of this group?
Yes.
To seek funding? You know, obviously, you'll have to come back to the Commissioners Court with a, a detailed final plan and cost estimate, and seek approval from the court for whatever you ultimately really want to do. I certainly want to make sure that the local community has plenty of opportunities for right input, and, and so they more or less get what they want.
Right.
And, but I, I think it's certainly wonderful. There does seem to be a fair bit of money out there that could be made available.
And we don't want to wait too long.
Yeah, I agree.
We want to capitalize on this as possible.
And that's why I really applaud your moving quickly on this. And, and the sooner you get going with the, what is it, the water, Kirk County Water Alliance, and they can kind of create a separate fund for this project?
Correct.
Then, then funds can be made of, made available. And perhaps we can progress, progress this project. I don't know if it would need to be done in phases.
Is Kirk County Water Alliance, are they a 501(c)(3)?
They are, yes, and that's why we're working with them.
So they're eligible for funding?
Yes, they are.
Right, right.
Yeah. Yeah. And we're also joined with a member of...
I'm not saying eligible for funding from us, but I mean, community funds, somebody else.
Correct.
Be able to donate.
I mean, our plan is to not come to the county for any financial assistance. Yeah.
That's very much appreciated. We understand that this is no cost to the county. It, it's just being a county property, it will have the final approval.
Right. Right, so our next step is to work with landscape architects, designers, engineers, to come up with a really solid budget and plan that is, you know, this is great, but it only gets us so far. It's a starting point. And I also, we've created like a social media page to gather community input. We're joined by a Lions Club member as well, Midge. Local Center Point residents are here as well, so we have, we're, we're really working hard to gather as much community input and putting it into a plan.
I'd like to ask the county attorney, how would this be treated if it goes forward? Just as a donation to the county, or?
I think we probably have to have a couple of different agreements with them. First, by commissioner basis, that y'all want to be able to review the plans, because it's county property, you approve that. I imagine that at some point, I feel about the resolution supporting the project as reviewed and approved by the Commissioners Court. But we'll have to, I think of it like the AgWarn, when the Stock Show Association donated funds for that, we, we improved probably some agreements like that were in place back then. For that facility. Also, and considering a conversation we had the other day, that Noel talked about a little long ago, when FEMA and TIDAM and several county staff members were in the room, there may be some FEMA funds that can help with replacing some of the structures so that some of the other efforts of the organization can, can be used to improve parts of it that are different from what FEMA might replace. So we can work together to think about how those can be secured.
And could this be, could we, you know, include Flat Rock in some of these discussions?
Well, no, this is their group.
Yeah, I, I think this group is focused on Lions Park.
Separate, separate.
But I, I do feel like this could be a, a example of what could be done.
Absolutely.
You know, we're, we're ecologists and natural resource lovers, and we really feel like, you know, this, all of that needs to be taken into consideration.
And I mentioned earlier, American Legion has already reached out and said they would like to help Flat Rock Park.
Good.
I, I don't know yet what that looks like.
Yeah.
But they said they'd come and talk to us in September. So I encourage anybody out there in the public who wants to help restore and, and improve our parks to, to follow this example. This is great.
Let, let me give you some practical advice.
Sounds good.
We have a tried and true format, where usually you come to us with a resolution, we discuss it. We nearly always pass it, I don't remember one, something like this that we've never passed. That starts with a resolution. And then a memorandum of understanding as you get, gather more information, come to us and say, "This is what we want to do," and start getting the buy-in from us. I mean, we're, we're, we're kind of endorsing you, and then we start in the individual steps to the, the buy-in. And hopefully, at some point, we'll end up with an inter-local agreement, and those would be the normal steps. Resolution, MOU, ILA.
It won't be inter-local agreement, because they're not a government. But today, I think that what they need so that they can move forward is some action from the court supporting their efforts, and then, and then they can come back, like we suggested, with more information and a plan to, to run by y'all for a resolution.
Correct.
Okay. So I'll make a motion, and please correct me if you think I'm going down the wrong path or could do it better.
I think that you could make a motion and...
Support.
To, a motion to support, and then read the rest of the, of the item. I think that that would be helpful for them to have that in order.
Okay, so I will make a motion that the Commissioners Court support the East Kerr Center Point Riparian Recovery Committee operating under the Kerr County Water Alliance in their efforts to progress the development of a comprehensive plan and budget for the restoration and improvement of the Center Point Lions Park, which was heavily damaged by the July 4th flood.
Second.
Motion and second. Is that good enough?
Yeah.
That was wordy, thank you.
That gave you... Regurgitating the agenda item.
I know.
Plenty of fertile soil to come up with a resolution.
Yeah. And, and as soon as you're ready, maybe the next, you know, two weeks from now, we can have a resolution that perhaps our county attorney can bless, and then we can go a step further. We're still gonna want you to come back with a detailed plan, but I am interested and encourage you to expedite the grant process so that you can secure funds while they're still available.
Right, right.
And y'all know Noel Fuddham, right?
What's that?
Y'all know Noel?
Joy?
That is our, our grant coordinator.
You need to know her.
I'm Katie, Mr. Mayor. I'll come talk to you.
This isn't necessarily a grant, but anyway.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, item 1.19, consider to discuss and take appropriate action regarding implementation of the burn ban. We have to do this every once in a while, and what, where we've left it is we've taken the burn ban authority and reconsolidated it in the county judge for the time being. I lifted the temp, the burn ban for those properties outside of the affected area, which is above the debris high water marks on both sides of the river. And that burn ban remains off in those areas. With regard to the areas inside the affected area, we certainly want to keep that on until we're ready to release them. And we've got a comp, it's, it's not too complicated. We've got the county divided up into zones, and they're all numbered east and west, and the debris contractors are following that map and be the same map. And, and that's ultimately when we start lifting the burn ban on the areas inside the affected area will be according to those maps. So...
So I would make a motion that we leave the burn ban in the, under the jurisdiction of the judge at this time while we still have a separation that we do with the affected area and unaffected area.
It's ongoing recovery.
Yeah.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
I'm just, I'm okay with it for now, but just, you know, it's starting to dry out, and we're getting into the dog days of August.
And we're gonna start watching the lighthouse.
And so, you know, we're gonna get to where it would be good to be able to implement or lift a ban in, by precinct as we've done in the past, because there's so much, there's such a difference in area and...
Can't we, as Commissioners, give the judge our guidance, what we, if we would like to, to implement in your precinct at that time? That he could...
As a practical matter, I think we're approaching the time of year where we're probably more likely to put a burn on than take it off. Right. Well...
A ban on. A burn ban on.
A burn ban on, yes. Put a, put a burn ban on, because...
Yeah, it's just that not, not all parts of the county are equal.
Correct.
With respect to, you know, drought conditions and weather conditions and so forth, so, and just...
The Keys Bar Report, we're still in good shape. I will say that we have been blessed with our temperatures. We haven't seen 100 degrees yet. We've been in the nineties, low nineties, which is unusual for us.
Yep.
So we've been...
Still real green.
Still green. And, and talking to Task Force One, even under ideal conditions, I would, I would, I don't think, within the river basin, it would be at least two weeks before we could release the zone, if, conditions.
Chief Ken and I were talking about it yesterday.
And, and that's speculation, you know, that could change, and these things change. But that's where it is now.
And, and bear in mind, historically, the way we customized handling our burn ban was to get, delegate to the Commissioner for each precinct. And at this time of year, we're not really interested, I don't think, in lifting a burn ban. It'd be more likely that we're gonna have need to place another one off. Everything inside the affected area, we've got a burn ban on. And so if, and I just mentioned to the Commissioners, if there's anything that you want to take a burn... want to take a burn ban off, let me know. I'd be inclined to agree with you in heart.
That's fine.
Sure.
We want to err on the side of safety.
I agree. I'm good with it. Just wanted to have a little added discussion. And just so the public knows, I'm getting a lot of calls from people who have property going down to the river, and they would like, you know, when are they going to lift the burn ban in the river? We want to burn. And that's coming. But I think what's important, they need to also understand that we also have a program where if they register, they can provide access, and, you know, then the state will send their contractors in and remove the debris, and the whole issue of whether you need to burn or not goes away. And I think that's still the preferred way to go, so I'm just making that comment so that those who are asking to burn, hey, just invite the debris removal folks-
Without a doubt.
On the property, and take it out.
And that stuff is on our webpage, our Facebook page. I've put some copies out there on the table of procedures for getting that done.
Okay, that's it. I'm going to take a vote now.
Have we taken any action?
No, we've motioned and seconded and leave it in your control for now.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Five oh. Welcome, Commissioner.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Item 1.20, let me introduce, this is Jody Greenstead. She is our Commissioners Court. I guess we'd have to check these terms on coordinator versus manager versus administrator, but she's the one that takes care of us. And-
Very well.
This has to do with, let me call it, consider discuss to take appropriate action to address new requirements for the posting, Mistress Court agendas pursuant to House Bill number 1522. Ms. Greenstead.
So, House Bill 1522 was approved and will take effect September 1st. This affects the posting of our agendas regarding the budget. So any agenda that refers to the budget needs to be posted three business days in advance instead of 72 hours in advance. So we're going to have to start posting those on the Tuesday prior to the meetings. I'm suggesting or recommending that we just start doing that for all of our meetings. I do, this might affect the September 8th meeting, but I kind of, I would like to recommend we just start doing it maybe after the first of the year, give people some time to get used to this, because for decades, it's been the 72 hours. So that's my recommendation, maybe, obviously, if it has to do with the budget, we will still get it done the three days prior, but I recommend after the first of the year, just all of our agendas starting done three business days.
So the new deadline would be what? Wednesday morning by 9:00 a.m.?
Well, for, it's going to have to be posted by Tuesday at 5:00, legally Wednesday at 9:00, but Tuesday at 5:00. So our agenda items, we will have to have it know later than the Monday before it needs.
We can do that.
And that's effective September 1?
September 1, if it deals with the budget.
Okay.
I'm just recommending that we do it across the board.
Just learn a new habit.
Right.
Exactly, yeah, it'll be, but I want to give the staff time to get used to that new habit, because, I mean, I, way before me, that's been like, you know.
I'm okay with it. I would just say that there could be extenuating circumstances where if it's not budget-related, we may want to take advantage of the opportunity to go, to utilize the 72 hours on a very important agenda item that comes to our attention late Monday or Tuesday or whatever.
Well, I hear everybody, but I think where we are right now is, the law's the law, it takes effect September 1, and we just have to comply with it. We don't have any other actions to take right now.
For budget, yes, but I'm recommending we do it for all. And my only concern with that, Commissioner Paces, is that's kind of what we do now. I have a, I have a deadline in place that a lot of people don't pay attention to, so, you know, so I feel like that's a slippery slope.
We'll try our best.
Well, do we need to take action in this?
We have to comply, I don't know.
It's law.
The action she's asking for is-
I make a, I make a motion to, that we go, set our standards or our procedures as stated by Jody Greenstead.
I'll second.
January 1st to start posting three business days prior to the Commissioners Court meeting.
What she said, yes.
And I said that, she sounded it much nicer.
I guess what she's asking for is to have all the agenda items by the close of business on Monday, so that she can have it posted by the close of business on Tuesday. Is that correct? Is that a way to state it?
Five, yeah. That's what I said.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
Then I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second for us to go to three business days notice for posting meetings, particularly with regard to budget, but all of the things as well, too.
Yeah, the budget, we have to. So if we have any meetings in September, if this rolls over at all, we have to. But the rest of our agendas, I would like to start after January 1st.
Okay. Back to January 1st.
Jody, this, this is just for our meetings. Does this have any kind of implication for when you're posting that there could be a quorum at another meeting, or is that still going to be the 72 hours?
I assume this, well-
As long as it doesn't affect the budget, it can be 72 hours.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just asking.
But I would like to get in the habit of three business days in advance.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you. Item 1.21.
We need to vote.
Oh, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.21, consider discuss to take appropriate action to determine the Kerr County Designated Contact for the Kerr County Unemployment Fund with the Texas Association of Counties. Ms. Potte.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Tac has reached out, they want to update our agreement for our unemployment fund. I will still be their contact for everyday, day-to-day business claims, all that, but it is required to have a member of the court be the contracting authority. So I'm coming to y'all for direction on that, and I will complete the form and have y'all sign it, whoever y'all decide on.
Who is it now?
Historically, it's been Commissioner Letts, that's who was on it, so we're trying to get him off.
I am, yeah. Makes sense.
Well, can I make a recommendation that Commissioner Holt?
I think so.
Serves as a contact for the Kerr County Unemployment Fund with the Texas Association of Counties.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for Commissioner Holt to handle the, be the designated contact for the Kerr County Unemployment Fund, Tac, as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.22, consider discuss to take appropriate action regarding jail commissary and inmate trust internal audit report. Ms. Shelton.
Yes, we recently completed this audit per local government code 351.0415, and we ask that you accept the report.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the jail commissary and inmate trust internal audit report as presented. Any discussion?
Just a question for the sheriff. Sheriff Leefah, I mean, there are a number of recommendations in that report. How's the progress towards addressing the recommendations made?
I'll get with, I get with Sonia, my administrative assistant, and look into those.
Okay, so basically, it's too new, and you haven't had a chance to do it yet.
No, I have seen them, I mean, no, I have seen them, I already met with the auditor, and we've had those discussions, but it's between her and I that will fix those.
Okay. Well, seemed like all reasonable recommendations to me, so I encourage you to get on top of it.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
We have a motion and a second to approve this report. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.23, consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve the Kerr County Purchasing Policy. Ms. Shelton.
Yes, you have before you a purchasing policy that has FEMA standards in it. And this, of course, FEMA is for any of your federal grants. It also has been tweaked, for lack of a better word, for, to put in Kerr County's policies that we follow already.
Okay, I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the Kerr County Purchasing Policy as presented. Any discussion?
Yeah, we had to, we needed to approve this, so we are eligible for-
Right.
Um, we're eligible, so yes and no. We still have followed most of it, but this makes it formal, and it makes it really easy to give them a policy that shows that we're following FEMA guidelines.
I assume we were already doing most of this, but there were, there were some things like on capital projects that we had a bunch of resolutions, and I don't think we actually do that as a matter of practice. We kind of address all that stuff in the recommendation, but-
If it's in here, we need to be doing it for federal grants.
All right. Did Charlie get a copy of this?
Um, we have generally been following this for the stuff that he's with grants.
This court hasn't been approving a bunch of resolutions.
Every, what, there's actually in here, I don't remember which page, is each elected official department head will need to sign that they have read it, and that they are going to be following it. And it's on Appendix C.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the approval agenda, we have item 2.1, budget amendments.
Yes, you have eight budget adjustments in front of you, and two of them fund the CID position, and the other one was for the capital outlet for Roden Bridge that were approved at the last meeting.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 2.2, paid bills.
Yes, invoices for today's consideration, $861,820.21.
I move for approval.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 2.3, late bills.
Yes, today's late bills, $3,202.49.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve paying the late bills as presented. Any discussion?
What was the late bills? Just, I see it says fuel, but didn't understand it, it's part of it.
Which one?
I guess there's a couple bills for fuel that were late. Was it just a-
So when, when we call them late bills, it is, they were late getting to the auditor's office so that they could be included, and this bill would have been presented to us and after the date, but they probably need it paid.
And missed their cycle to submit. Got it, thank you.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.5, monthly reports.
Yes, we've got a few.
Oh, I would assume the auditor reports.
Oh, auditor.
Yeah, auditor reports.
Yes, and we're asking that you accept the audit report for the Environmental Health Department. We finish that audit.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the auditor report as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Monthly reports.
All right, we've got a few of them here. February, March, April, May, June 2025, Environmental Health and Animal Services Director Reagan Gibbons. April, May, let's see, April, May, June 2025, Justice of the Peace Judge William Ragsdale, Precinct 4. July 2025, Environmental Health OSSF Director Ashley Batters. County Clerk's Office, County Clerk Nadine Alford. Constables, Constable Tommy Rodriguez, Precinct 1. Constable Kyle Snyder, Precinct 2. Constable Paul Gonzalez, Precinct 3. Constable Brad Ryder, Precinct 4. Justice of the Peace Judge Mitzi Fritsch, Precinct 1. Judge JR Horn, Precinct 2. Judge Kathy Mitchell, Precinct 3. Payroll approval, County Treasurer Tracy Saldon. District Clerk's Office, District Clerk Dawn Lance. Auditor's Office, County Auditor Tanya Shelton. Investment portfolio summary, April 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025. County Treasurer Tracy Saldon. I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the monthly reports as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.6, court orders. We have four of them, I've looked them over, they appear to be in order. And I would make a motion that we approve the court orders as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Information Agenda 3.1, SaaS reports from department heads. IT, Corey Tennis.
So I just wanted to give an update on the Office 365 migration. We actually kicked that off live on Monday afternoon, Monday evening, and overall, it was pretty successful. We had probably 5% of people throughout the county that had system errors. And a lot of that had to do more with just learning the new profiles, that kind of stuff, so pretty smooth transition. The biggest problem that we had was the unknown, and I say that in, when I sent out information requests to all the department heads, asking what are your processes, what are the emails, stuff that you are getting in, what are the email addresses that are used? I had two offices, maybe, that worked with me on a really fluid basis. Thank you, Tanya, you were great, bringing up questions and, you know, the how-tos. The majority of our phone calls Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday last week was, hey, I'm not getting this email. I don't know your business processes, so we didn't set it up until after the fact. Those processes are now streamlined. We're probably still missing a few we can address on the spot. One of the other things that's kind of hanging out there, we still need to go back to every user and update, update their Microsoft Office account on their workstation. Part of it depends on which platform, because there are three different platforms within the business environment. Some have encryption, others don't, and others will have to rely on older versions of the desktop Outlook platform if they want it on their desktop. So we are still going through that list, cleaning that up, making sure everybody is operating on the environment that they are supposed to be in. So, other than that, like I said, it was pretty good. Standardization was put into place to identify different offices, allow for office transfers, to make sure that that process works as it's supposed to. Some of the standardization was based off of systems requirements, compatibilities, making sure we can operate efficiently. There was some grumblings about that, but standard, working with current and historical data, working with the auditors and the HR department, we put these standards into place, and we hope to take care of it through. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Any questions?
No, you've helped me out quite a bit, getting that in, so thank you.
When you talk about the unknown, I thought you were talking about me.
No, that's me.
Yeah.
I need to see you.
Overall, it was pretty good.
You too.
Yeah, there's, overall, it was a good, good migration. We have had to make some minor exceptions. Those exceptions are less than 2% of the county, so overall, very good.
Very good, thank you. 3.2. Okay.
Hi, Sylvia. Just want to let y'all know that we are working on the position schedule diligently. I am a little short-staffed, and so we're team-tagging it. It is close to being done. Hopefully, by the end of the week, it'll be over to Tanya's office, but as y'all know, we can't proceed with it until you guys make a decision. That wasn't made until Tuesday, so I just want to make sure that that was out there. That's the reason it's not ready yet. There's a lot that goes into it, and very detailed information, so, but it will be done this week and over to Tanya as soon as possible.
Elected officials?
I'm one of the ones guilty, not giving court information he needs, and we caused a lot of trouble, but we since fixed it, right? But hey, Commissioner Jones, I didn't know if now would be the time to talk about the river. I tried to give him a $3,600 bill that Airbnb from Rich's precinct gave me, and he didn't want it. But basically, just clear up that if we can and talk about it. My deputy's acting under the no-swimming dijery, which I know Judge had to get ahold[1784.32] My deputy's acting under the no swimming advisory, which I know Judge had to get ahold of you Friday. Tom was very helpful in that, and that we found out that is not an order, so we no longer have people get out of the river. I don't know what you want to expect, expand on that, Tom.
Well, basically, UGRA had put out an advisory.
Yes.
And y'all were acting as though it were an order.
Oh, yes.
But it was a smart way to act.
It was, it was.
Because the river does have, well, it's just, it's nasty right now. You heard the gentleman at the beginning of the meeting talking about how severe that is, and there was a Airbnb that apparently a sheriff's deputy went in and had them leave the river, got upset, went back to Houston, and then wanted their money refunded from the Airbnb. And they're trying to send the bill now to the sheriff's department.
But she since took it back.
Right, right, and I appreciate that.
She's going to contact Rich.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But there was no court order to that effect, and I think that's where the confusion came in, because we have it on our website, responsibly on our website-
Yes.
-as an advisory. And so, Judge, I don't know how you want to, how y'all want to handle that. I hadn't had a chance to visit with you, because we've been hitting and missing, but should people be in that river?
I think we just follow UGRA's advisory.
I think the question here is, do we want to order that, or do we want to advise that?
Well, it's private property rights.
I know.
So it would be difficult to order.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's the reason it was handled the way it was. And so they, since then, they are not ordering people out of the river, because it's not an order, but I think it's kind of self-corrected.
I believe it had an advisory unless-
We politely ask them.
Unless there's a need to make it mandatory.
Well, I mentioned earlier that there was people fishing at Flat Rock yesterday, you know? You know, it's advisory not to eat the fish out of the river right now.
I think it's awesome that people are thinking that we, that we're at a place to where they can get back in and enjoy the river. I think that's great, but I think there has to be a little bit of common sense as to what could be in that water, and are they going to turn around? Are we going to be, who's going to be held liable if they get in that river, go back home, and they've contacted something bad? Because even our divers are having to get headshots and everything else. Who's going to be held responsible for that, should that occur?
I think the advisory should cover it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if it is, that's great.
But I mean, in fairness to this particular owner of the B and B, they reached out to UGRA, and were told that the water quality was okay. In fact, I've got an email here from the general manager there that, yeah, the current water quality samples are within normal range. Now, that doesn't mean that we should be encouraging people to get out there, but, you know, there's-
Yeah, I don't think anybody's done anything wrong here-
Right.
-at any level, but if their advisory states one thing, then we need to hold, we need that posted, I think, like we have on our website that protects the county. Would that give us, offer us the protection that we need?
If you've got the UGRA advisory posted on the website, I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, we put it out there.
And then you continue to give out warnings if there's an advisory.
We won't take action. We'll just ask them, yeah, give them warning to get out in the meantime.
We may need to contact UGRA. I can do that, and find out why they're giving out contradictory information. If the water levels are good, why do you have an advisory?
Or updated, anyway.
Been updated.
It was updated the same day as the complaint.
Yes, it was.
Yeah. So I don't know. I don't think there's anything for us to do.
Well, I don't hear anybody asking me to make it mandatory.
No.
And if I'm not asked to do it, I'm not going to inflict it on somebody.
No.
I'd vote against it.
Yeah.
I mean, there are other dangers in the water than just the water quality.
Correct.
Yeah, a lot of metal.
It's a complex determination, but at this point, I think advisory is probably the most accurate adjective we have to describe it. I mean, activities in the river have always been at your own risk.
And I do appreciate that, being at Airbnb, I appreciate them withdrawing that. That was good, that they understand.
Yeah, they did. She was nice about it. She's a little frustrated. She had a lot of people canceled with that.
Lost a lot of money.
Right. She was nice. All right, that's-
Any other elected officials? Very good. Three point three, liaison commissioners?
I'm still staying in very close contact with all my liaisons during this time, but nothing to report from any of them.
I'll just report on the 550 Earl Garrett project. That's pretty well gone by the wayside, so bids, we had asked for revised bids. Initially, we didn't get any. Anyway, none were turned in. And, you know, I think Commissioner Jones had mentioned that the upper floor of the building might be utilized for other agencies as a result of the flood, so I think we're just putting the whole project on hold. There's no funds available in next year's budget for it. We probably didn't have adequate funds in this year's budget anyway. So that's all. Great?
A couple things. Just for the CARFA, a note, I attended swiftwater training with our volunteer fire department this week. I'm a really good swimmer, even though I've drowned before, and this was very, very tough training. And I want to reassure the public, which is why I'm mentioning this, is there are twenty different counties that are doing swiftwater training right now. So they are max participation at every training site. Don't worry, Judge, we were not in the Guadalupe. We were in the Lano River. Get it right?
Yeah, there's progress.
Lano River in junction, and it was really tough training. I mean, I'm not undermining the value that it creates to be able to throw a rope, get a boat, and pull someone out of the water, because lord knows, we almost got a lot of people probably in positions they couldn't got out of as volunteers, and we realize that now. And we'll continue this training. We'll continue equipping as each department gets boats of their own up and down the river. So that's what we kind of want the public to know. We're going to equip people with the right equipment, but it needs to continue. It needs to be not the fifty-year-olds, but the twenty-year-olds that are doing it, so they have the experience, and it continues on long past us. And I want to encourage those to volunteer, to step up, and get trained, and be a part of a solution in the future. Off that history, who's writing the book on the flood? I'm going to volunteer, and it's going to be a long process to write an after-action. I read Betty Murphy. Shout out to her and Comfort, and Jerry Lee gave me the books. Thank you. I read them both, and I got another one from Betty Murphy, who in Comfort wrote the book about the Seventy-Eight Flood. And when I read it, it was illuminating. So this was only, they lost three in Comfort in Seventy-Eight and five in Center Point. Look at our numbers compared. How many lessons learned do the sheriffs have? Do our comptrollers, do our legal team have, do our PIO? Think about all the interviews that need to be conducted by me and our history group, and I'm going to take on that task, because frankly, I don't, I've never written a book, but I can find no greater purpose right now to do that. And I would ask y'all's patience. As you know, I'm kind of double-tapped right now with teacher and this, but I'll have some relief with my new guy coming on deck. So we are going to start the process. Email me on the commissioner's website if you would like to be interviewed as a part of our county staff, or like Betty Murphy did, individuals that have story. I've seen it on TV, and so have you. There's a lot of stories that need to be documented and put together in a lesson-learned format. I've done it before for the, my previous job with the Marine Corps, and I know kind of what I want to do for the county. Not asking, I'm just saying I'm going to do it, because it needs to be done. Thank you.
Yeah, as far as the event center, it's still the EOC out there, and we still have a pretty good-sized footprint out there with TIDOM and FEMA and Task Force One, DPS, everybody else, but it's getting smaller. We were able to have our first event, had a car show there over the weekend. So trying to get back to normal a little bit. I believe we have a couple livestock sales coming up and stuff like that that can be held in the show barn itself. Lock the doors where the people can't get into the EOC and stuff, have a different entrance and stuff, so, you know, some things are coming back. We, of course, as you can imagine, we had to cancel a lot of scheduled events, and Jake's working with people. You know, letting them know in advance and what have you if we can or cannot. You know, we don't want to make people mad where they don't come back to us next year. So that's a work in progress, and Jake's doing an excellent job out there with that, as well as the other two guys, Ed and Joel, out there, his helpers out there. So that's all I got.
Well, and as a follow-up on that, the mayor and I have been invited to a meeting on Wednesday at nine o'clock at the EOC to meet with EMR, which are the federal emergency managers, and TIDOM for a transition, a partial demobilization of some forces, reducing the footprint, and what the preliminary discussion is to leave the hallway where the main restrooms are and the two classrooms will probably be what is remaining of the EOC, and the big room that divides in half will probably be turned back to the facility. I don't know any details other than they've asked us to come to the meeting, and we'll be there.
I'll just add a little bit to Jeff's comments on CARFA. Not so much CARFA, but, you know, I had thought that we should budget additional funds next year for another swiftwater boat, and we don't need to.
We don't need it, yeah.
I know, you know, the Center Point Volunteer Fire Department's been very blessed with donations and funds, and I think they now have two swiftwater boats, or will be receiving two, plus an airboat, plus a SHIRP. A SHIRP is an amphibious vehicle that goes on land and in water. Pretty amazing piece of equipment. So we will, for future events like this, have far greater capability in support of the county.
And Comfort has the same as well. Two boats coming. We just need to follow up on the other departments and see what they can offer.
But I do agree that, you know, we need to encourage people to volunteer for the Swiftwater Response Team and younger people. I certainly found my-
Hard work.
My limits at sixty-eight aren't what I used to be able to do.
Yeah.
So that's it.
Okay. I don't believe we have any executive session items. With being no further business before the court, we are adjourned.